I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please. Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling. Here, sorry. Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
It did. Thank you. We are all here except for President Bradley. He was unavailable this evening, but we do have quorum. We will move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. And first on the agenda is the Kane County State's Attorney's Office, the Community Prosecution Unit. If you would come on down and just state your name for us, whoever's going to speak.
Good evening. It's an honor to stand before you.
If you wouldn't mind sitting down, because then you'll be on camera, so, and we'll be able to pick you up on the mic as well. Thank you.
All right, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here this evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Pam Bradley with the Kane County State's Attorney's Office. I am the Director for the Community Prosecution Unit. And what we're doing is bringing our office into the community. We did it several years back, and she wants to bring it back in. So, just to tell us a little bit about us, we have two Assistant State's Attorneys who will be participating, as well as support staff. So just briefly, if you guys can come and introduce yourselves quickly. And they'll tell you what unit they're in.
Hello, everyone. My name is Morgan Young. I'm an Assistant State's Attorney in the Felony Division.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Vasquez, and I'm a Support Staff in the Abuse and Neglect Division.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brenda Patton. I am the Administrative Assistant for the DUI Misdemeanor Division.
And the staff that I have with me, they actually live in Montgomery. So that makes a big difference when you actually have someone live where we're trying to service. What we'd be doing is hopefully collaborating with stakeholders in Montgomery, the Police Department, anything that the Police Department would like for us to do, and work closely with them, whether it's like noose's abatement regarding drug dealing, landlords that are, you know, having drug dealers in their units and not doing anything about it. We're there to help on the criminal end of it. We're also looking to hopefully bring in the Law Enforcement Youth Academy. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, we did that, do that in Aurora. And we've been doing that for like seventeen years, since about 2004. This year I have about forty youth, so I would like to bring that to Montgomery as well. North Aurora, we're trying to establish one there too, to get our youth involved and hopefully gain that respect back, so to speak, you know, with our law enforcement, to let them know that they're their friends. They're not against them, but they're for them. I have had sworn officers come out of the program, those who have went into military. I have graduates, actually have an intern with me today. She graduated from Western University. She's interning with our office. So a lot of good things come out of it, so I would like to bring that to Montgomery as well as North Aurora in hopes to continue to help our youth within the community, but also to do a lot of community events as far as prevention. I'm looking to do maybe a community forum, perhaps probably at the Prisco Center, to bring a lot of awareness regarding this TikTok, you know, social media, just getting the parents involved, letting them know what's going on in the community with their children, and even elders, you know, to try to stop that elder abuse and fraud. So those are our intentions, and hopefully we can work with you guys in the near future. Thank you.
Ms. Bradley, did you leave your contact information with our clerk or?
Yes, Hema has my information. But I can definitely provide that information to her as well.
Okay.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here this evening. All right, we will continue with the public participation portion of the meeting. If any members of the public would like to address the board, you can come forward. You get two minutes to address us. Any takers? It's if you're not on the agenda for later. So when you come down, if you wouldn't mind signing in and then tell us your name and your address, please. Go right where she was, yeah. Is there a sign-up sheet there?
There's a sign-up sheet. Before you guys stop, before you guys stop, my two minutes.
I'm not starting your two minutes yet.
Minute and a half is up.
Sorry, time's up, no.
Out the clock. All righty, I'm ready.
Okay.
First and foremost, thank you, thank you guys for allowing me to come share with you guys. But what I do is, my name is Calvin Wilson. I'm the CEO, and I represent CW Second Chance. It's a local non-for-profit, and what we do is provide general needs for the homeless, the less fortunate, and high school students. What I was asking for is you guys support the, support me, and how do I go about getting support from you guys to just participate in what I do? Because I've been doing it for like the last ten years, and I just wanted to address you guys and let you know what I do, and I live in the community. So what we do is, like I said, we provide tents, shoes, clothing, hygiene, hygiene bags, and things of that nature. And I just want to know, how do I go about getting assistance from you guys? That's really a question. That's why I came in. I work every day, you know what I'm saying? The way I get my funding is I work and I go to different knock-on doors. So I want to know if there's any way you guys can assist me or give me some direction on somebody that I need to talk to to get some support, so I can continue to do what I do.
So I typically, we don't necessarily start throwing out answers. What I would, suggestion I would offer to you is to check with Montgomery Rotary. And I happen to be one of the members, so if you wouldn't mind leaving your contact information, I'm happy to reach out with you and see how we could perhaps team up. And as long as your information is provided to our clerk or there, my fellow colleagues can reach out to you as well and see what they can do to help.
I don't know if I was wrong or right, but I got cards for each and every one of y'all.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Like I said, I need all the help I can get.
We will take that. Thank you very much.
This is what I do. And like I said, I'm a resident of Montgomery. I've been a resident of Montgomery for the last three years. You know, so what we do as a team, we always put like socks or T-shirts or something in our cars, and we see people on the corner, and what we do is pass it out. It's me and like four more people, you know what I'm saying? We just a team of people that go around and help people, and I live in Montgomery, so.
Okay, wonderful.
Just bring it to you guys, let y'all know what I do and how we can move forward in doing this.
Okay, well, we appreciate what you do, and yeah, if you would leave your cards with our clerk, and she'll make sure that we get them all by the end of the meeting. But thank you for coming and telling us what you do.
Appreciate y'all for having me.
All right.
Tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I gotta get to work.
Well, thanks for making the meeting. Yes, sir. Would you come on down, please? And same thing, if you would sign in and then tell us your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Parag Surathi, and I am actually here to request a liquor license for a packaged liquor.
So I'm gonna stop you for just a moment. We actually have you on the agenda later. If you wouldn't mind waiting until that comes up, because then we will have you address us at that point.
Got you. I thought maybe this was open. It's my first time here, so I wasn't sure.
No, I appreciate that. But yeah, we've got you on the agenda, so we will definitely have you come down and speak then.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Any other of the member, members of the audience who are not on the agenda that would like to speak? All right. Sonia, anyone online?
It does not look like it.
Okay, fantastic. We will close that section of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes of the Village Board Meeting of June 13th, 2022, executive session meetings of the Village Board Meeting of June 13th, 2022, accounts payable through June 27th, 2022, in the amount of $1,033,471.59. The refuse report for May 2022, ordinance 1968 amending Chapter 3 and 1/2 and adopting Chapter 3 and 3/4 of the Village Code pertaining to the Regulation of Video Gaming, ordinance 1969 granting a variation from Section 1006(c) and Table 1006.1 regarding the maximum driveway width of the Village of Montgomery Unified Development Ordinance for OK LLC near the section of Montgomery Road and Douglas Road. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Youngerman. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Yes. Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. That passes. Moving on to items for separate action. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Is that what you were asking?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I wasn't sure if I had said yes or not, but then I realized we started with Doug, so that's fine.
We won't ever let it happen again. All right, moving on to items for separate action. We have a professional service agreement with EEI in the amount of $24,924 for Fairfield and the Farman Fleet Lift Station modifications. Hi.
That's me today.
Oh, okay, Director Wolf.
Thank you. Trustee Spurling. So as you had mentioned, the Fairfield and Farman Fleet Lift Stations are in need of upgrades and modifications to continue operating them without incident. Those lift stations were roughly put in in the 2000 and 2001 timeframe. So most of the components as part of those lift stations have reached the end of their life expectancy, so this is somewhat of a maintenance item. So staff is requesting the approval of this PSA from the amount of $24,924 to EEI. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
This won't affect their, the water customers at all when this is going on?
No, this is for sanitary lift station.
Okay.
When this was originally put in, it was a temporary lift station? Has this become a permanent lift station now?
It's, it has not. There is still a potential that, at least for the, I'm sorry, let me back up. For the Fairfield and Foxmore Lift Station, there is a potential that that lift station could eventually go away. That would be on the way of development happening west of Montgomery, more than likely in the Sugar Grove area. So there's a potential that if that interceptor was extended, which is just east of that subdivision now, that we would be able to tie that community, or those two subdivisions rather, into the new interceptor line, and that lift station would go away. The Farman Fleet one, I can't speak to. More than likely with the potential for development out there that will continue. I don't believe there's an ability currently for those to be tied into a gravity system, but again, with development potential to the east, it could happen. But that I have not seen any future design on at this point.
Yeah, are we going to, for the Farman Fleet, are we going to look into connecting that to the SCADA system then, since it's not monitored right now?
Correct, yeah. All of the village's lift stations are potential to be connected to the SCADA system.
Okay, perfect. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Moved by Guyer, second by Bowman. Take the roll, please. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Yes. Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Betzinger. Carries, thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-011, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Montgomery and Aurora Township Road District for roadway improvements located in Blackberry Heights subdivision. Director Wolf.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. So as you had mentioned, the village had, in our five-year IRP design plan, identified the areas of Blackberry Heights for resurfacing in the construction year 2024. As part of that, the Village of Montgomery owns a few of the streets in that subdivision, as well as Aurora Township jurisdiction. So the Village of Montgomery reached out to Aurora Township to inquire about participation in the village's IRP program to seamlessly resurface all of the roadways within the entire subdivision. So the resolution in front of you tonight gives the village the ability to become the lead agency for those improvements and be able to do those through our IRP program with Aurora Township contributing their fair share relative to the streets and improvements that would fall under their jurisdiction. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Director Wolf?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for the intergovernmental work, because this is the stuff that we do better than a lot of folks, so thank you. This is, this helps everybody and saves expense for everybody, so thank you.
The mining strike should be over by then?
We hope so, yeah.
Okay.
All the poor drainage issues out there, that's part of this, this project?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The storm, the poor drainage issues out there with the storms, that can be part of this project?
There are storms, so are improvements incorporated in the design plan now, mostly for the Bradley area. There are some restrictions to what we can do. Some of that will be pending on the regional detention basin in the future.
Any other questions for Director Wolf?
One quick one. On the payment schedule for that, have they indicated the desire to extend that repayment out over those three years? Or is that just a scenario in case it needs to be extended out over three years?
It's a scenario in case they need to extend it out. Currently, actually, they're trying to contribute sooner than later, so they're trying to front fund the project. So, for example, the end of their fiscal year, they have some money left that they'd like to bank for this project. You know, one of the things to point out is the Aurora Township is, you know, limited on their funding, so really the scale of this work is probably about equivalent to three years of paving for them. So it's, it's a major project for them, but one that's, that they understand they definitely have a need for, and again, appreciate the fact that we're carrying some of the, some of the weight to do that.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Guyer, second by Marisak. Take the roll, please. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Yes. Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Carries, thank you. Our next item is 2022 Intergovernmental Renewal Agreement with Kane County for Animal Control Services. Chief Smith? Nothing new. Okay. Any questions for Chief Smith?
Does this cover Kendall County also, or just Kane County portion? What do we do for Kendall County portion? Do we have a separate agreement, or? Okay.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisak. Take the roll, please. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Yes. Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Thank you, that carries. Moving on to ordinance 1970, approving a final plat of subdivision for the Montgomery Business Center, Unit 2, JB Commodities LLC. Director App.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. Montgomery Business Center, as you know, is located on the north side of Awkut at the intersection with Commerce Drive, where United Sugars is located. Last year, you approved a PUD amendment and preliminary plat for Unit 2 of that development. That included eight lots. Most recently, back in February, you approved some variances for proposed truck terminals located on two of the lots in that proposed subdivision. And now they're before you with their final plat of subdivision to create those lots. So the developers, JB Commodities, and allowing for this subdivision, and we are asking for waiver of first reading, allow for them to complete the sale for that property.
Any questions for Director App? Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Bowman. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Yes. Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to items for discussion. Our first item is a liquor license request for a new packaged liquor store. This is going to Director App.
Yes, we have Mr. Park here. He's looking to open a liquor store at 1611 Douglas Road. That's located just north of the pet supplies location there on Douglas Road. He's here, can talk you through what he's looking for, but for packaged liquor, that would be a Class C license.
Come on down.
Yes, Parag Surathi, my name, and I'm looking to open a liquor store in Montgomery. Currently, I own and operate a successful liquor store in Warrenville. So I wanted to expand and open up another location in Montgomery. I'm a resident of Aurora, and that's my request. I wanted to get your opinion on if that's something that's feasible, and yeah. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to help, sir.
I will chime in first. I normally do with Douglas Road. I'm the only one on the board that lives close to Douglas Road, so I see things every day. We had a request come through very recently, and at that point I had asked how many liquor licenses were in that corridor. And we have different types of liquor licenses, but there are currently nine, and we have the potential for number 10 to come in with the last request. I personally feel like it's oversaturated with the liquor licenses. So I'm, I'm a no on it for that reason. I think there's just too many options there to purchase alcohol or go in and drink, or whatever the license covers. It's a small area, and there's a lot of opportunities in there. So unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support your request this evening, but I can certainly be outvoted by my colleagues, so I will open it up for other comments.
With the growing population, I believe that might be another need for more, need for that. And also sometimes it helps with the traffic going on in, on north direction or the south direction. So the current location that is, is on the other side, so I was hoping they might be able to do it on this side. So that was my, is this the opinion?
Is this parcel behind Dunkin' Donuts?
That's correct.
In that, where?
Where the gym was. Was it Gold's Gym?
World Gym, whatever it was.
Currently, it is for sale. If this is something that's feasible, I'll be looking to purchase that property and go that route.
And is it the, the whole thing, or is it one of the smaller storefronts?
So it's gonna be the whole strip center.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Isn't there housing behind that, residential?
Yes.
Hamlet backs up to that.
Yeah. Is that within the ordinance of how close an establishment like that can be to residence? Do we have such an ordinance?
I believe there might be state regulations, but usually those are related to schools, churches, and things like that. I don't think it's related to residential, but I'll have to double-check that.
Any other?
I'm not necessarily opposed. I mean, we have four auto places over there, right? Three, three auto places over there, and again, it is a little, nine, I'm trying to do the math in my head of.
Yeah, because you think about, you have Chiquita, you have, I'm talking about all the licenses, not just this type of license. It's any license.
Yeah, so I mean, again, I'm not opposed to it. It's a vacant parcel right now, and it would be something you'd be used in the area, so I'm not necessarily opposed to it.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Well, stealing a line from Trustee Betzinger at a previous meeting, Douglas Road needs a lot of things. I don't know if it needs another liquor store or not.
Yeah, I'm, personally, I'm a firm believer that Douglas Road can support other types of businesses other than something that is going to request another license and potentially have gaming, you know, because that comes with the license. I, I think there are other opportunities there, but, you know, I don't want to get off topic from Mr. Surathi.
Yeah, because we had someone come before us with a request that was going to go in up on the corner of Douglas and 30, and it was kind of something similar. They ended up going to a different part of the village. Have you looked at other areas in the village, or?
That was the opportunity that I had, because that, that center was, was up for, for sale. So that would be something that I would be interested in purchasing instead of leasing. But if there's any other opportunities, I would definitely be interested in that area as well.
Yeah, because we appreciate you wanting to, to come to the village. It's just, you know, finding the, the proper area.
Right.
Yes, location, location is everything, as they say. And there was a developer that came forward just a couple of months ago on a project that had a retail unit where a gaming and tavern, you know, with a liquor license was part of the development. And I expressed concerns at that point, and that project was scaled down to just the car wash portion of it, eliminating the gaming and the tavern part. So with all due fairness and for the same reasons, I would encourage business in the, in the community and growth in the community, but if there was a different location that could support the packaged liquor store, I would entertain supporting it at that point, but not at that current location.
Okay.
I agree with what Trustee Spurling said and Trustee Bowman. Wrong, wrong location for, for that type of use, for continued type, that type of use.
Tom?
Not excited about the use.
So we're not excited about the location. We're, we're certainly very happy that you're looking at Montgomery. If you wouldn't mind speaking with Director App at another time, maybe we can find a different location, if, you know, if that would work for you. But yeah, the support isn't there right now for that location for you.
Appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we do have another request for a liquor license. And this is for Hacienda El Dorado Mexican Restaurant, located on Montgomery Road. Director App.
Yes, the existing restaurant, El Dorado, located at 817 Montgomery Road, is looking for a liquor license to be able to serve liquor at their restaurant. He can speak to the details on that, but it would generally probably be a Class G license for restaurants.
Hi, how you doing, everybody? My name is Sergio Dorado. I'm the owner of Hacienda El Dorado Restaurant. And I'm seeking to ask for a request for a liquor license, because I will say 50% of the customers, they are asking for it. We only sell, will sell the liquor like inside the restaurant, so I don't think that'll be any issue like taking out the liquor or whatever. I, I see that last year with the pandemic, we, we got hurt very bad. And this year now is looking better. I seek, I asked for a liquor license last year, but I did have some partners that they didn't agree on the last minute, so we couldn't move forward. But now I, I buy their percentage in the restaurant, and now I'm the only owner. So I'm looking forward to, to get the liquor license. That way, it will bring, I will say like 50% of the revenue in the restaurant. I will have like three to six more employees, and the restaurant depends how it works. And then, well, I'm here asking for a liquor license. I don't know what you guys think.
So I was under the impression that restaurant was still holding a liquor license.
They do not have a current active license at that location.
Okay.
This is, this is, you're next to Gary O's, right?
Right, right.
Oh, thank you.
You're thinking of Bill's, the old Bill's?
Yeah, the old Bill, okay, thank you.
I Googled it. I'm not that smart, I Googled.
This look, this restaurant at one point did have a liquor license, so am I?
If they did, it's not on my list, so it's been a while if they did.
Did you ever have a liquor license?
No, because when we were gonna apply, I was talking with my partners, and then they didn't want to invest any money because of the year of the pandemic. But I had to like buy them out, and then But I had to like buy them out, and then now that I'm by myself, then I'm, I'm trying to get it.
I'm good.
One of the amazing things about technology is I'm on your Facebook and Google and looking at reviews and all those sorts of things now. And the food looks, I've never been, actually been there, but all the reviews are good and all the pictures and stuff, the, the food looks amazing. So, I'm surprised you haven't been in here earlier.
Right. And, uh, well, right now in the menu, we are adding seafood too. So, um, with the alcohol seafood, probably gaming, video gaming. So, it will help out, and I'm hoping or willing to get more employees to, to keep going.
Tom?
Do you currently have gaming or is this a attempt for liquor and gaming?
Well, right now, I'm, I'm just with the, I'm thinking just the liquor license. If, if the gaming, it come up, I don't know, a company come and ask me for it, then I can try to get it too, if that's possible. Or that's a different license or?
I, I think once they get the liquor license, they can have the gaming. Is that correct?
Or if, if that's, uh, well, I would like to apply for a ball just in case, if there is a different license.
We don't have a separate license for the video gaming. You just have to go through the state.
Okay.
And the reason I bring it up is because approving the license then in essence approves gaming.
Right.
Then basically, right? So, I'm just making sure if the board is rolling that path.
You do have a separate licensing process now for the gaming, but it's still tied to if they have the liquor license, they're able to get the gaming.
Sure.
But they always have to have the liquor license first.
But there's a separate fee and application now for the gaming where there wasn't before.
Would there ever be an issue or cause if they have a liquor license and have the opportunity to go for gaming, would there ever be a reason to deny?
Typically, the screen, it's tied, like the state ties it to the liquor license. There's certain revocation process for the gaming, like if some, if there's something egregious that happens on the site, like a public safety type issue. And then you'd have the process to rescind licenses, but it would be similar to like the liquor commission process where there's a hearing, and it's a pretty high standard to revoke once it's been issued.
Don't they have to meet certain requirements within the facility to have gaming though, as far as where the gaming is and how large the facility is?
They would have to meet all the state requirements with regards to the gaming, yes.
Right, so, yeah, you just can't stick a game in a corner someplace and go, good.
Correct, yeah, and it would have to be screened off.
Like separate place.
Yeah, it's a process, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, uh, the major thing right now is the liquor license because the customers have been asking for it, so. And to be honest, it's been like a long year that I'm saying, ah, it's coming, it's coming, and it's not coming. So, I'm here. I will see that it will increase the sales. It will be more taxes for the state. It will be more revenue for me and the city, so.
Matt, any thoughts?
I don't know.
I, I really, I'm taking in more of the, the gaming and the liquor license and how it's tied together. And how, what I'm hearing is that if we approve a liquor license, then the, the license holder only has to go through the state application, pay the 250 terminal fee. And then boom, we've got gaming. I'm not a big fan of the gaming issue
Okay.
in town. So, it, it's, it's not more of the, the personal issue with your business and serving alcohol. It, it's a, a restaurant liquor license is a lot different than a cash and carry packaged.
Right, to take the liquor.
You know, so, so they're completely separate. I just don't like the fact that once we, once I say yes to this, then it's just, you know, an open road to lead into the gaming.
Well, um, about what you're saying is true because I wa, I was hearing that it's very close for that liquor license. But the only thing is, um, my main idea is just to provide the service to the customers, that what they are asking for. You know, like, let's say somebody asks for a chicken fajitas, and then they want something to drink. Or, I don't know, they already have a beer, and they just want to have something to eat and accompany with, uh, with, uh, the food with another beer, and then go home and rest. So, I don't know. I think that'll be a good idea for the liquor license. If the gaming is issued, then I just stay with the liquor license, you know, like, I will try to promise that I'm just going to sell liquor inside, but.
And Laura, please help me with this. So, once they apply with the state for the liquor license, we don't really have a say in the gaming. They, because they get the gaming through the state. Now, what we just recently passed is.
It's more or less a, they have to get the license, but the license isn't like a separate screening requirement. It's more or less they paid the fee.
So, it's just, it's like an extra step for them to have gaming, but we can't, once they get the liquor license, we can't tell them, no, you can't have gaming. And that's been kind of the thing right along.
And just a reminder, Class G does have that 50% food requirement still, so that is in there, but.
Does anyone know what kind of liquor license Garyo's has? Because I, I can go two doors, two or three doors down, Garyo's has gaming, and I can, I'm on their website too, and I can get at least a beer.
I would guess it's the same.
Probably the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
The same one with the 50%.
And you, I mean, so Taco Madre got a liquor license and put gaming in, and like two years later, they took the gaming out. So, it's not always the end all to be all. And again, I, I'm thinking of this more, not the gaming, more that people want to come in and get a margarita or have a beer with their, with their burrito or tacos. Then, then they want it to become a gaming center.
Right. Plus, the, the new place that we're doing, to be honest, if you have that plate with a, a beer or a margarita, like you say, and a birthday celebration or something, you know, it makes a difference in a restaurant.
So, we, what happens, we, when we have this discussion is we typically say, yes, move forward, no, we're not interested, or I would like more information. So, Dan, where do you stand?
Yes, move forward.
Matt?
Move forward.
Steve?
Move forward.
Doug?
Forward.
Tom? And I'm a move forward. So, we will move forward with issuing the liquor license. There's a bunch of steps that happen with that between community development and the police department, so.
We're, we're not issuing the liquor license. He's still got to go through the background checks and all those things, right, Chief?
We're just moving forward with the process.
But we'll go through the application process, and then the next step for you will be creating the additional license under that class that'll be before you for adoption.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Dorado.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to new or unfinished business. Anyone, anyone? Tom?
I have new. Some of you may have received an email. I've had three requests for backyard chickens in the past two weeks from various residents. I know that issue was discussed at length by this board at some point prior to, I think, Mr. Baumann and mine's arrival. I simply said, I know that it has been discussed. I would be happy to bring it up in new business and see if the board is interested in discussing again. I don't necessarily have a real strong opinion on either side of that equation.
Is there a three-minute recap of the prior discussions that the board has had to?
Yeah, I was just going to say. Laura started sweating.
Sonia, Laura, would you like, or, or shall we bring this back at another time when you're more prepared?
I will read. I responded to Megan, and I'm looking for that.
Did you go off your memory or did you?
No, I'm actually looking for the email here. Just a second.
But it's been relatively spread. I, I received one email and then two just comments in, in conversations of, wouldn't it be great to have backyard chickens? I don't know if it's great or not great. It might be great for you, it might not be great for your neighbor. I don't know. I haven't researched this. But I know you guys spent some time on it at one point.
We did. There, there was a pretty lengthy discussion.
And there's more and more communities around us that are allowing it. But again, I, I did respond to Megan's second request, in all honesty. But, you know, again, it's a, it's a whole nother debate. So, yeah, it's probably better for.
I had asked for staff to respond to her because I figured they had
The background.
the ordinance and the update and all that stuff right there in front of them. So, Steve, go ahead.
This is the email that I sent to Megan on Thursday, June 23rd. Said, Megan, when sending an email to the Village Board, it's best to blind copy everyone. If any Village Board member would have responded and copied all on your original email, would have been a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and it's against the law. It would have been a $1,500 fine for each board member. I know you're proud of me, Laura, for throwing that in there. The chicken issue came up about three or four years ago, and the board was against the idea. I've read your email and understand your pros for chickens, but I have to consider your neighbors and their concerns as well. I'm against the idea and would not be in support of it. You always have the right, as does anyone else, to come before the Village Board. You can either put yourself on the agenda for a future meeting by reaching out to Village Staff, or there is a two-minute opportunity before each Village Board meeting for any resident to get up and speak before the board for two minutes. Steve Youngerman, so.
And I, I also noted she had not listed her address, so there really wasn't a way to know where she lived, if it was for real, so.
So, as I recall, the previous discussion was related to a specific person that wanted to have an accommodation for their chickens. So, we do have a set of chickens in town, but it's for, for a very specific emotional support chickens.
My, my concern was I, I was not aware or any research regarding the, the noise that's created, any odor that is created. And we all have coyotes that are becoming more prevalent and aggressive in the neighborhoods as well. If that would just encourage that to, that behavior to, to increase. So, if there's any information from that, that agenda topic back, I would love to look it over if it's available.
We would be happy to look in our emails and resurrect the research that had been previously done and circulate it to this board.
I know that.
I wouldn't be happy if it, if a chicken coop popped up next door, but I'd at least like to look over the, the information.
I know that the neighbors of the original chicken situation were not very happy. And I think because you can't put that chicken coop in any sort of easement, it essentially occupies the middle of your backyard. And in the original email that we received from Megan, she had mentioned mosquito control and those sorts of things. But I think that she forgets that they've got to be in a, in this coop. And so, yeah, they, they're able to eat the mosquitoes that come into the coop, but it's not like they're free-range chickens running around your yard, eating, eating bugs and worms and stuff, so.
We can review that again. We're happy to review that again with the information that was brought forth before.
Drop off a terabyte drive, and Laura can drop you all the info.
You have hours of conversation on this. Feel free.
Anything else besides the request for the chickens?
Yes.
Okay.
Second thing is sidewalk and shared use paths throughout the community. There's a lot of half sidewalks available now due to brush and overgrowth of trees. And some of that's ours, some of that's residents, some of that's some other entities. Maybe the next newsletter, there could be a reminder to please, you know, cut that back and make the sidewalks accessible. Just some bike riding this weekend. It was entertaining having to dodge off sidewalks and paths because of the overgrowth in some areas.
Doug?
No, I, I have nothing.
No, I had seven last meeting, yeah.
Matt, any new or unfinished?
The only thing I would say I would reference, I could do an email or phone call to Director Wolf, but since we're here and, and talking. I was on a walk last night with my bride, and we were down the, the bike path off of Concord that goes back by Blackberry Creek. And it's, it's getting in some pretty rough shape. Grass, grass is growing up in between the, the paths and, and so forth. So, if that's something that can be put on our timeline or if it's already on the timeline for future consideration.
We'll look at that. I believe that section of bike path might be owned by Kendall County Forest Preserve, so it's not ownership of the village. But we can definitely pass that information along to the forest preserve with the, with that issue. But I'll double check and make sure, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that area is, that you're referring to is, is the forest preserve.
All right.
Dan?
Of course. This Wednesday, beautification, floral judging. We have 76 nominations this year, which is quite, quite a few for, for floral, usually the first one out. But we're a little later this year, so maybe everybody's flowers came up and they nominated themselves. So, if anybody wants to help judge, 5:30 downstairs here at the hall. And I'll have the packets and everything ready. Public Works gets everything ready for us. And we'll pass them out, go out and have some fun, and then go to Poor Boys after. 5:30 this Wednesday, yeah.
You've had me at Poor Boys.
Anything else? Dan, anything else?
No.
Uh, one quick item for Director App. If you wouldn't mind checking in with the post office again. I know I had asked you about their parking lot. There's some pretty deep holes there in the parking lot. Somebody could break a leg, whatever. You know, it, it could be bad. If we can get a status on when that's going to be taken care of.
Will do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we have no executive session this evening. You see our future meeting schedule. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisack. Take the roll, please. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack. Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.